Thank you.
Doing it again.
The grandlungs are back.
Oh.
So many. Red pill or blue pill, which one? Yeah, just.
Did you close up?
Just so it's not flashing in here, that's. Yeah, as long as they can still see us, it'll be fine. We're having some technical difficulties with the Zoom link this morning, so please bear with us. Thanks, everybody, for the pledge. Is there any additions or changes for agenda?
None.
As it will stand as presented. Constituent time. Welcome. Please make sure that mic is on.
Good morning, gentlemen. How are you today?
Doing well. Please introduce yourself.
My name is Sheila Gretnar. I live at 419 Violetta Road and I'm here to ask some questions about the brown six lot subdivision that's up for finalization today.
Mr. Chairman, she may want to wait to have that conversation during planning. It's 10 o'clock. Yeah, I didn't know you were. That was your topic.
And that is the topic. There is, there's a lot to go through on that, but I do have several questions about, including Planning Commission.
Okay, at 10 o'clock, we do have planning. You're, that would be the appropriate time to do that.
Okay, okay, I can come back at 10.
Very good. Is there anything else you'd like to address to the board?
Uh, no, I just, let's follow our current land use code, guys. That's where we're at. Yeah, so.
We'll see you at 10 o'clock.
I'll be back at 10. Very good. Thank you.
Anybody else this morning like to address?
Address what?
Address the Board of Commissioners.
Oh, please. Marley near Burger 41447 Landmark Mesa Road. It's just outside of town, Paonia. Um, I am again here to address the issues that were brought up by the Citizens for a Healthy Community. I personally have been interested in environmental issues since the 1970s. And because of that interest, I've probably noticed things and been exposed to things that the average citizen has not. And may I have a work session with you regarding the issues that were brought up by CHC? And I would like the equal amount of time that you gave to them in a work session to rebuttal some statements and actions that I've observed.
Yes, that's fair. We will do that.
Thank you very much.
Could you also present at least a summary or bullet point items that you'd like to cover with us?
I know how important it is. For some reason, I've lost the connection between my printer and copier and my computer, and I haven't figured it out yet.
You can email, you can email it to us also.
Okay, that should work. Thank you very much.
Um, make sure your contact's on there and we'll get back to you with a date and time.
Okay, so I should put my email on here.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else? Anybody online, Lindsay?
No, sir.
No hands? County Clerk, this is Terry Stevenson.
Good morning, Board and Robbie. We have the minutes for the April 18th, 2023 Board of County Commissioners Regular Meeting. Were there any changes, additions, or deletions?
I have none.
None here. Good to me.
My second item this morning is your consideration of an application for a special events permit for NFRIA. Was there Conservation Center doing business as Western Slope Conservation Center? It will be located at 759 Shady Lane, also known as Paonia River Park in Paonia. This event is, permit is for June 3rd from 2:00 PM to 10:00 PM. I'll remind you that they have done this event several years now, and there has been no issues reported. They, you have the documentation and we've received all the fees necessary. They did an excellent job on their, on their application. They have a control plan. Alcohol training has been done, so they've always done a great job with that. I do believe Kate is on Zoom and I don't know if she would like to add anything to this, but I would recommend that to approve this special events permit.
I would just say thank you for your consideration. It's a family event. It's never been a big party event. And, and we do control it down in the, in the River Park. We have an area where liquor is allowed and not allowed, and we're only serving beer, cider, and wine, not hard liquor.
Any questions for the applicant or Terry at this one? I just want to clarify the date.
It is, we just noticed that, right? It is for June 3rd.
Okay, very good. All right. Then I will move that the board approved the application for a special events permit for Western Slope Conservation Center to be located at 759 Shady Lane in Paonia on June 3rd, 2023, from 2:00 PM to 10:00 PM.
I second that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. So be done.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Terry, anything else for the commissioners today?
That's on my hat. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Business.
Scott will be in here to provide the staff recommendations for the next bids. If you want to move to item number seven, Karen is here.
Agenda item seven. Karen, please come forward. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Okay, this is to ratify a contract from the Colorado Department of Public Health. It is for our core immunization services. We get an annual contract every year from the State Health Department. And this is to provide vaccines for our community. There's a state statute for public health. And we're happy to receive this. The amount is $35,041, although it doesn't cover the cost of our yearly, it is appreciated, so. Sometimes we do get excess funds a little bit later on in the year that are applied to our immunization fund as well, so.
And this is a ratification. Any questions, Karen?
I have none.
No, none here. I move that we ratify the chairman's signature of the contract between the Colorado Department of Health and Environment in Delta County for the annual immunization core services for fiscal year July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2024, for the amount of $35,041.
I'll second. Any other further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Thank you, Karen.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Let me know if you need anything else there, okay? Uh, we're going to jump down to number eight while we wait on Mr. Sheets. This would be the, go ahead. Uh, yeah, so, uh, we, uh, Mr. Hilling resigned as Board of Adjustment, and so we are going to, I'm going to make a motion that we appoint Candace Blair, who lives in Cedar Ridge, to the Board of Adjustment.
I second that.
Any questions, comments on that, commissioners? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Mr. Stewart, you're up next with the ambulance leasing, licensing.
Ambulance time, licensing time again. We already did Delta County Ambulance District before you. Today is the ambulance annual license for Norfolk Ambulance Health Service District, doing business as Norfolk EMS. And then permits for their five ambulances. They are basically a support service that serves the Norfolk Valley, inspected their ambulances and reviewed their application, and everything was in order, as always. Questions?
And next year, the state will be doing this, right?
June of 2024, so we'll have to do it in the spring and then they'll, once they're currently in, as they're writing, they're writing regulations right now, in the draft regs now, say the services license on June 1st when they take over, no, June 30th, when they take over, that they'll just continue until their process is fully implemented, so we'll have one more year doing it.
Okay. Well, I'm excited. Well, I'll move that the, uh, board approved the ground ambulance license and the five vehicle licenses for the Norfolk Ambulance Health Service District and authorize the chairman to sign.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Well, we have on Scott Sheets, we're going to do the jail report. Jail report for Sunday, April 23rd, 2023, male inmates, county jail 33, female inmates, county jail 10. Male inmates, Department of Corrections, four, female inmates DOC zero, total 47. Average daily inmate population for the week of April 16th through April 23 of 2023 was 54.4. Jail report for Sunday, April 30th, 2023, male inmates, county jail 35, female inmates nine. Male inmates DOC three, female inmates zero. Average daily inmate population for the week of April 23 through April 30, 2023, was 53.57. That's quite a drop in the DOC numbers. Just, everybody knows that the DOC has transferred all their inmates, prisoners, to rifle and other facilities pretty much for the month of May, while the flooding event sweeps by us here. Scott, good to have you here. Looks like you've been busy this morning already. Scott, you might need to move over there so you can be in front of the microphone. Okay. I know, it's just you.
It's me.
Just you. Go ahead, Russ.
Okay, so the first bid is 2023 RFP 09 gasoline and fuel bid. Two bids were submitted, Master Petroleum and Parish Oil. Scott, do you have a recommendation from?
Well, on the, on the gas and oil, we resubmitted a new RFP because there was too many inconsistencies on it.
So we'll move that one to the next.
Yes.
Okay. All right, next then is RFP 2023 10 mini excavator.
Yes, we wanted to award to CAT. They were the cheapest bid on that by quite a ways.
Yeah, they're 78 and everybody else is pushing.
They went all the way to 90,000.
Yeah.
Should that be Wagner?
Yeah, right.
Out of Grand Junction?
Yes.
That was a page three. Yep.
Okay.
Yep. I'll move that the board approve, uh, RFP-10 to Wagner Equipment for the mini excavator for the amount of $78,516.
I second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, next is 2023 RP 12 compact track loader. Two bids were submitted. Wait, sorry, five bids were submitted. Bring with the compact track loader.
I don't remember what the bids were on that. Sorry.
Okay, so we have the next three.
Yes.
You got, you got two different bids there. They look for the same thing, just about a thousand dollars off.
I'm pretty sure one of them was just had the higher flow for the, yeah, I think you should go with this one because it had the higher flow for the mill emission.
Okay, so that'd be bidder number five.
Yes.
68 to 16.
Questions on this, commissioners? When you say higher flow, what do you mean? Is that hydraulic flow?
Yes, you need higher, higher hydraulic flow for the milling machine for the asphalt when you're laying new pavement up to it. You have to mill it down.
I'll, I'll move that the board award RFP 12 to Wagner Equipment as bidder number five for dollar amount of $68,216.
I second that.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, next is culvert pipe 2023 RFP 14 for bids received.
And let's see, we had Ford Terra, right, had, are we just talking just the steel culverts?
We have steel culverts, reinforced concrete pipe. This is the one generally we end up with different vendors.
Splitting up.
Yeah.
We were going to go with Fonterra on the cement pipe. Because everybody else has to get it from them.
And then core and main is the cheaper ones for the
Yes.
other cohorts.
Right.
For the polycoated and steel. What about the polyethylene?
Let's see, that was a missing.
See cores cheaper there. No bid, and then skyline steel. For the polycoated.
Core and main.
And the steel, there's still.
Yeah, that, that, we were going to go with core and main.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. All right, so for, uh, we'll break this up for I moved that the board approve for RFP 14 for steel culvert pipe. Go to corn main for $159,154. For the polycoated pipe, go to corn main for $162,202.60. And also for the polyethylene culvert pipe for $45,438. And that the board also approve for Terra doing businesses, rinker materials for reinforced concrete pipe. At, at the round with flared ends for $214,403.60. And for the reinforced concrete pipe elliptical with flared ends, $214,153.76.
I second that.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, next is 2023 RP 15 asphalt impulations.
You want to go with, um, Kabeko? Their, their bid is a little higher, but the other bid was for FOB Pueblo, Colorado Springs, somewhere over in there, so we'd still have to ship it this way. It ends up being the same price. And Kabeko quoted the same oil that we wanted.
So, all right, better to SunCore Energy would have to be shipped out of Commerce City or?
Yeah, Commerce City, yes. So we'd have to pay the freight to here.
Okay, so for 2023 RFP-15 asphalt and emotions toward the bid to COVID Incorporated for the CRS-2R delivered to Delta County in an amount of $526,602.
Second that. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Do you remember what the bid was last year? What we paid?
Or Kabeko, no.
I just wondered how much this is going on.
That's it, Scott, thanks.
Okay, thank you. I'll finish moving.
Okay.
Thanks, Scott.
Yes.
I know we cut you mid-stride there. You got one more, John. Yeah.
Morning.
Morning, John.
Um, this is regarding RFP 2311. And it's the switchgear. This was already approved at a previous meeting. Uh, VLCM was the only bidder that submitted a, pretty much a legitimate bid. There was a no bid and then a kind of a ridiculous number that another company had thrown in without satisfying any of the bid documents, so. Since negotiated with VLCM to reduce the cost of that, their bid, got rid of some things that we could live without. And they were also able to get significantly better pricing from each PE. And that's reflected in that quote that I think you have, correct?
We have the, yeah, we have the
to the amount of $75,030.34. And there's also a scope of work for $9,605.
Yeah, we have that quote, and that's for, that's for the same thing that we bid before?
Yes.
Okay. So we went from 200 to 75, is that correct?
Yes.
So you're asking us to revise our, our bid award
Yes.
to, to show the, the current amount?
Yes.
At 75030?
Plus the six, there are the 9605 scope work. That's the, the installation and labor on the vendors.
And it was 960?
So that makes a total of $84,635.34.
I will, uh, move that the board revise our award for RFP 11, 2023. Still, uh, awarding to Valcom, uh, but for a revised number of $84,635.34.
I second that.
Any further discussion, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Thank you very much, John.
Thank you. Thank you.
Quite a deal to get that reduced.
Yeah, let's should kind of show you the preferred pricing that some of these guys can get. Thank you.
It shows, shows how much we can reduce IT budget this next year, too.
Start right here.
Nice try.
Thank you.
Probably anything else, commissioners this morning?
Not at this time until 10 o'clock with planning.
Commissioners, anything else? Okay, we will recess until 10 o'clock for plan. Well, good morning again, everybody. We're going to come back on record for the Board of County Commissioners Regular Meeting of May 2nd, 2023. We have one item before us from the Planning Department. That's PLN 22007. Kate, are you ready?
Yes, give us a second, turn my screen. Okay, so today we have PLN 22-007, C Brown. This is to accept a final plat for a six lot clustered subdivision in the A5 zoning district located to the west of Chantel Lane and north of LJ Road in Delta. This parcel is a nineteen and a half acres and has been zoned A5, which requires a five acre minimum for subdivision. The preliminary plat was approved by your board on July 19th, 2022. It consists of six lots, lots one through four and lot six take access from Chantel Lane, and lot five takes access from LJ Road. Lots five and six have designated stewardship areas that total 7.83 acres. There's also right of way dedication for the Hammerhead at the end of Chantel Lane totaling 0.063 acres. This is an aerial view showing the layout of the subdivision. To the west is the hundred foot no build area. Abiding that is the emergency access illustrated by the dotted yellow line. The private access from Chantel Lane is illustrated in the purple, which is access to lots one through four and lot six. The yellow hatched area at the end of Chantel Lane is the Hammerhead turnaround that is being dedicated to Delta County. And then the green dashed outlines on lots five and six are the building envelopes. The conditions included designated stewardship areas for lots five and six, including building envelopes for where development could occur. Shared access, domestic water irrigation, which is managed by UVW UA. An emergency access, a hammerhead turnaround, and right of way dedication for Chantel Lane and impact fees, all of which have been paid. I would like to note that in the staff report that went out to your board, it was noted that condition number 14 had not been met at the time of the staff report. The Hammerhead had not been fully built to county road standards. However, staff received a memo from county engineering yesterday on May 1st that a site visit was conducted by county engineering staff, and it has been determined that the Hammerhead turnaround has been built to county standards. As such, per standards, the developer shall be responsible for maintenance for a minimum of two years, at which point the developer may request county maintenance of the Hammerhead. This is the final plat. As you can This is the final plat. Uh, as you can see, I've illustrated the hundred foot no build area along the west boundary of the property. As well as the emergency access. The green shaded areas for lots five and six illustrate the designated stewardship areas. I have also highlighted the flat notes that pertain to the stewardship areas as well. And then the yellow highlighted plat note refers to the irrigation shares, which again are managed by UVW UA. With that, staff recommends that your board find that conditions of the final plat have been met. And accept the final plat for PLN two two dash zero zero seven C Brown. And accept the quick claim deed for the right away dedication for Chantel Lane. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. From here, what we're gonna do is see if commissioners have any questions of staff. Then we'll ask the applicant to come up and add anything else he would like to add to that. They'll then open it up for public comment on this. We'll close the public comment. Uh, we'll have further discussion with staff and commissioners, uh, and see where we go. So right now, commissioners, is there any questions for staff on this one?
Not yet.
Same here, not yet.
Okay, Mr. Brown, would you like to come up?
Uh, yeah, so there's been.
Wait till you get up to the mic. Introduce yourself.
Uh, I'm Cody Brown. Um, trying to this other vision. Um, there's been concerns about the water UVWA. Um. There is a six inch cap that feeds all the lots except for one. Um, there's I stuck an eight inch tap in because that's what the pipe was there. It feeds one lot. Um, the rest of all the lots are fed off of six inch valves to keep up with. However, it also said. Um, is there any questions?
Uh, address the board.
Oh, yeah, you got any questions?
Uh, not yet.
Okay.
We may come back to it.
Could you pass the sign and cheater?
Thank you, John. So this is the public comment portion of this. Um, first on there is Sheila Rechner. Scraper, please join us.
Morning again.
Good morning. Good to see you again.
Well, just to touch on then with the irrigation water. I I agree with Mr. Brown. However, there are distribution lines. We have three subdivisions in this area. We have Hilltop, Merrilla Vista, and now Mr. Brown's. All of which are fed from the headgate, which is actually in Montrose County. Comes almost hmm, not quite three thousand feet. Across Montrose County to our distribution, which is the three valves, which Hilltop has a six inch. Uh, Merrilla Vista has a six inch. The way I'm understanding from Mr. Brown is now he has an eight inch to go with the pipe. Um, we would like to see that brought down to a six inch because. Hilltop subdivision is the furthest away. He will take all the water when he irrigates, which we should all be able to irrigate. Um, so he also has. Two or hmm, I could be speaking out of turn. I believe there's a four inch tap that will. Feed out into the subdivision lots. Again, when those are turned on. Where Merrilla Vista might have water, Hilltop will not have water. It will, there's just no pressure. Um.
Ms. Grant, you do realize Delta County does not administer.
Administer, correct, but in your resolution. It was strongly recommended for an irrigation plan. And if we don't have a plan in place for the three subdivisions, how? How is it fair for the water?
I don't disagree with you, but that's.
I understand and. Um, but it does state that head headgate location, pipe location, direction of flow, where and how irrigation water will be applied. Et cetera. And it's also to specify the operation of the irrigation. Which again, that's part of the operation. So that's where I was hoping. An irrigation plan could be set in place. One was introduced, uh, back in June of twenty twenty two and. It just fell off to the wayside. No one agreed to it. No one wanted to talk about it. I think they wanted to wait and see. Um, here we are. It's now an issue. I don't think we should wait and see. I think we should try to have something in place for that. Again, there's three thousand feet of pipe that comes across another county. That if that pipe should plug up, we're gonna have to go dig in someone's field. No one will have water. We'll have to wait. I I mean, I have a pasture. I'm I'm irrigating. What about my right to be able to irrigate my pasture?
And when you say nobody agreed to that, you're talking about the homeowners?
The homeowners, all all the homeowners. No one, um, wanted to discuss it. Um, could have. There there's some opinions there that. Don't pertain, but, uh. I think they wanted to play wait and see. Now we're at it's imperative to have an agreement in place. One for. Cleaning that irrigation system, cleaning the headgate, um, paying for the distribution lines to. Uh, take care of the irrigation water. If one line is broken, we finally have it where we can shut off. A subdivision, each subdivision that helps. We just need to go a little further, is my opinion. Um, another issue that I have is, uh, Mr. Brown's proposed covenants, and I understand you all don't. Um, govern covenants. However, I don't believe that the neighboring homeowners, uh, specifically who are up against him. Understand that the two lots, lots five and six, he wants to keep his current covenants in place. Which were to serve a nineteen and a half acre parcel. He's now broken those two, those properties down. That's why we're here. And we have two five acre parcels. It would allow for thirty animal units for those. I mean, that's a hundred and fifty sheep on five acres. You put three hundred sheep on the ten acres that he's trying to govern under these covenants. Doesn't that become small agricultural? Isn't that, I mean. That just seems, uh, like we need to address that as well. Um, and I and I appreciate that he's trying to go forth and put covenants in, but we still need to tweak that a little. There's also a recorded document that says the Hilltop subdivision has to agree to his covenants as well. And to my knowledge, I'm part of Hilltop. I've never been notified of any, any changes, any requests, any. No, nothing. Just here's the covenants and this is what I'm gonna do. Um, the emergency access easement. I do not understand that. Um, there's nothing. I I understand there's a an easement on a plaque. There's nothing established out on the lot. Um, what's to stop Mr. Brown or or a future owner from planting? That entire field and and God forbid something happen. And someone has to use that to escape. What if it's been irrigated and you sync up to your axles in your truck? Because there's no actual specific roadway there. There's no, no specifications. I couldn't find anything through the county, through road and bridge, through the LUC, nothing, just that there's an emergency access easement. Um, also, according to Mr. Brown's, uh, plat that I have seen, there's to be a hammerhead turnaround in the southeast corner of lot six. There's, there's nothing there right now. There's no turnaround. There's nothing. Um, I just, uh, I just really feel that this is something, these are some things that do need to be addressed. And and I understand that you feel it might be an overreach, but. In the LUC, you talk about being able to put in covenants for, uh, domestic animals. I go back to five, you know, three hundred sheep on ten acres or or cattle. Um, you know, we're talking sixty cattle, cow calf pairs. It just seems like it's a, it's small agricultural according to the LUC, the SAFO. Where where does that line get drawn? And and the the access, we're adding, I mean, was there a traffic study? Was there dust control? Noise mitigation? We're adding five lots to to a subdivision that already has. Uh, eight lot, ten lots. So we're adding more lots to this one road. We're adding just based on two cars per lot. We're adding more traffic there.
Ms. Grant, I'm gonna need you to summarize now.
Well, and, uh, just I would really like the access addressed. Um, I would really appreciate if Mr. Brown would talk to us about covenants and. I really think that since it was in the resolution to have an irrigation agreement plan in place, let's get one in place. Thank you. Thank you.
Uh, Mark Warrell. Did you want to speak? You did not indicate one way or the other.
Uh, no. Okay.
Marlene Erenberger?
Oh, no, I wasn't on that list. There's some mistake.
Okay, this is from an earlier.
Okay.
Cindy Watson? Are you today?
Thank you. Good morning, everyone.
Cindy, let's declare when you speak today that you are speaking as an individual, not a PC member.
Yes, ma'am. So my name is Cindy Watson. I border this Cody Brown subdivision on one five six seven three LJ Road. Um, and I border him right on the actual LJ. Um, it's actually a right of way. It's not a road, so I wanna be specific that we know that that's not a county spec road. Um, first of all, um, I would like to, um. Actually note that Mr. Brown has been exceptionally transparent. Um, he has worked especially with us that order this as Ms. Gretnar made a comment about the impact. Um, first of all, she is in a subdivision that is not even in our subdivision. We're Merrilla Vista Phase One. This would have been Phase Two. Um, we have already had, um, Tim McCracken come up and do a, uh, traffic study. I believe even the sheriff's office was up there again last week to see. Um, I did write a letter, um, to the county. Um, and I believe it came to the Board of County Commissioners or will come to you about reducing the speed, um, from twenty five to fifteen, mainly to. Uh, compensate for those potential additional, um, uh, five lots that will come down Chantel potentially two cars per household. Could be, you know, another ten cars or so. So we've already gone forward on that. Um, Mr. Brown and I, um, went into an agreement on the LJ right away. Um, we shared in a cost of, uh, improving the road in front of our home. And, uh, also so that he has width to go down through with some farm equipment, et cetera, when he needs to. Um, I personally think that, uh, lots five and six, which are the building envelopes, um, that one comes off of, uh, the LJ right away. One comes off of Chantel, which is number six. Um, I truly believe that leaving that as stewardship land and continuing with the covenants that were with that. Um, are important. Uh, Mr. Brown has had a conversation with many of us already in Merrilla Vista that when he develops those four lots. Um, that are actually behind, um, the Ballard's residence area. That, um, he is interested in looking at potentially, um, utilizing our same covenants as Merrilla Vista. I think that'll be an amazing olive branch to us and it'll keep us all very cohesive. Um, we have a water board where we have representatives from each area that Ms. Gretnar was talking about. They did meet. Uh, prior to water being turned in and the agreement was. Why fix something that potentially is not broke? Maybe it's something that we potentially, if we have some water issues, that maybe we need to rotate days that we water. Um, or something of that caliber. Um, Mr. Brown has already stopped numerous times. I know between our home and Ballard's. Uh, stating that, hey, if I, you know, put a stewardship in there and start to plant. Let's communicate and have a conversation of what best works well so that we don't have impact people's water. I don't know how else to be clear on that. Um, the emergency access, I will tell you that. Um, going down the road that he has put in from the hammerhead, which he has obviously, um, put into concrete. And going in the west direction, it does go down along the ditch, uh, the ditch bank. Connects back into the LJ right away. So if there was an emergency situation and people could not, um, exit off of Chantel or onto Chantel. He has a backup plan there. Um. Cow and calf pairs, uh, the man does do cattle. Um. He's talked to us that he may be bringing in some cattle to finish off, et cetera. We're perfectly fine. Right across from us, there's a hundred and seventy two acres that used to be owned by Warner. That is now owned by an organic farm over in Boulder. And they, um, have not only all of that in alfalfa, but they also bring cows in. So we're perfectly fine. Um, everybody keeps their cows in their pen. Uh, other than that, I, we have a maintenance agreement with Mr. Brown that was required by the B O C C to do. And we've entered into that with him to make sure we maintain that LJ right away. Uh, mainly for emergency access or farm equipment. So. I think that he has, uh, been very transparent. Um, he's worked with us. A lot more than what we had on our last, um, individual that owned that piece of property. And I think his intentions are very good and he's willing to work with us on water issues if they arise or when they arise. And I think that's all we can ask for. I know that as a board, you do not, uh, take care of covenants, nor do you, um, issue water, um, irrigation plans. And I think that he has done what's been needed at this point and has left the envelope open if we need to have that discussion moving forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Uh, Valerie Ballard? Welcome.
Hi, I'm Vicky Ballard.
Vicky, sorry.
And our property borders, um, Mr. Brown's property, uh, one and two. And as Cindy previously stated, um, we've had multiple conversations in his planning process. Cody's been very transparent with what he's doing. Um, seems to have applied with all the requests of the county. And I think is trying to be a good steward of the property. He's made a lot of moves moving forward that the previous owner never attempted to do. Or was never contested about any of the things that the previous owner was challenged with. Cody's been challenged with. So we've been in support of what he's attempting to do there. And again, bordering his property, we certainly would feel major impact. Um, we've had multiple discussions about water issues, traffic issues, um, maintenance, covenants. All the items we were just talking about here. So just to let you know, as a bordering property, we are in support of the plan.
Thank you. Uh, before I close public comment period, is anybody else like to speak?
Anybody on the computer?
Anybody on the computer? Thank you. Seeing done, we're gonna close public comment period. Commissioners, a number issue been brought up. Any questions for the applicant or staff on this one?
Um, I I couple of questions here. Um. Emergency access. I I I'm I'm kind of questioning that. I mean, is is this gonna be a non-irrigated? Peace. How's that gonna work? Because inevitably, if there's an emergency that's needed, it's gonna be at the wrong time. So, you know, how are we gonna make sure that that is truly an emergency access? And not just a, not just an easement that who knows what happens to it.
Um, you had conversations with engineer. Um, so that's why we asked the engineering to to go out and 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 do the inspection, um, of Chantel, LJ, and the emergency access as well as the private road. There are actually currently no standards for emergency access in the road standards that I understand. Um. I don't, I have. Not seen the language for the emergency access easement about keeping it clear. I mean, the the intent through the public hearing process was that it be kept clear and passable. Um, at all times, at all times a year. Um, but I I don't know that that was specifically defined.
So we have no, no deed language saying.
The plat notes says the emergency access is utilized only in the event that the main access road Chantel Lane is blocked or otherwise inhibited. The emergency access is not open to the public for access to LJ Road and should only be used in emergency situations. So at this point. It doesn't say, you know.
Okay, well, well, back, back to my point here. I mean, if if it's, if it's being irrigated, you're not gonna get a fire truck through there. And I I think that's a legitimate legitimate issue. That was, that was the means of not having a secondary. Access point in the subdivision, and I think it was a a worthy compromise, but I do, I do think that. If we're gonna, if we're gonna follow through with that, there needs to be something that keeps that from being irrigated or being, you know. I I don't know. I don't know what that language is to maintain that, but I mean, if it's. If it's not accessible, then it's not a emergency egress.
Uh, there is a memo in the file that Kate just pointed out from July from, uh, from Mr. McCracken. Uh, the Delta County Engineering Department recommends the surface meet the standard of a rural driveway. Um. But I, again, I I haven't done the inspection, so I don't know what the current condition is. Engineering went out to do that inspection yesterday.
Mr. Brown, would you mind joining us?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Question on the emergency access.
Right.
Do flood irrigate which? Do flood irrigate, which?
Um, so to keep that emergency access open, I would, you have the hundred foot no build zone, which that incorporates some of that. Um, emergency access. So I was gonna hold, if I do irrigate, I would hold that ditch away fifteen feet from that to keep that area dry. So it would be possible. But I've, I've driven that road every day this year since we started this and I've never had a problem to cross it.
Did that answer your question?
Yeah, I just, you know, I, I would feel more comfortable if there was something. Some, some language someplace that states that that, you know, will not be irrigated, will always be, you know. Passable, I, you know, I, I just think, I just think there needs to be some type of protection in there.
Good.
And, you know, you, you may not own this property forever. Next guy says, hey, I get four more bales of hay off that thing if I, if I irrigate it. And we just wanna try to avoid that, so.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
And the country road access, I guess that just means it can be a dirt road.
Correct.
And that's probably what it is now.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
There's, there's no standards on it, so.
Okay, and, and like I said, just some language. Saying that, that, you know, there will be passable. You know, by emergency vehicles, you know, I think that would, that would cover it, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Would you be okay with that being in the covenants? Or would you wanna see it on, on the plat, which being revising the plat note and having it inside?
I, I, I would be, I personally, I think I'd be comfortable with covenants. It just needs to be, just needs to be someplace.
Specific.
Someplace specific, someplace with some, some legal. Standing.
Ms. Brown, I had a question about the irrigation plan. Delta County does not um administer irrigation plans.
Correct.
Covenants.
Correct.
But it sounds like um you have made some attempts to make it equitable.
Right, um.
Give us enough.
They, they have a water board which each subdivision, um, I talked to Dwayne Bush, he's kinda had on show that. And I'm, you know, they had multiple plans of what they wanted to do. I said, absolutely, let's, let's go forward with this. You know, I'll excavate it for us. You wanna redo how this works, let's go ahead. And nothing ever materialized from that. Um, so I did stick a shut off there to isolate. My subdivision from their subdivision in case I ever had a problem, that was removed from the previous owner. So there is a valve there to turn off Brown subdivision from Merrilla Vista and Hilltop. Um, and like I said, I did stick a six inch valve to, to keep it as fair as I could with what we have there.
Is, is there any kind of a measuring device at all?
No.
Okay.
There's the weir on top, but to get the full head of water, you need to be, um, from what Dwayne told me, you need to be. About two inches over the top of where to take all the water, which Dwayne says they've never taken all the water. They just don't use it that much. Um, you know, and I'm. With Merrilla Vista and Hilltop having full access, all sixty shares of water for however long, I understand that they're concerned. But the water is tied with the land according to UVAW, so.
Right, well, and that, once, once again, this is, you know, the, the county doesn't, doesn't delve into this. Um, I just do know that there's, there's plenty of case law that, that would hold you liable if you, if you ended up taking their water, so.
Correct.
Yeah, so, and I, I didn't know if it was a pressurized system. It might be tough to get a measuring device in there, but.
Well, there, there are ways to do it, but it's, it's expensive to put metering devices in on every one of those and no one must do that.
Okay.
It seems like in a subdivision, the irrigation water is one of the, the main issues. And like it's noted, the county can't become involved in that. Uh, and it's mainly up to the neighbors to work together to do the buddy system to, if anything. Uh, irrigate your neighbor's property so you can uh change the water when it needs to be changed. If the, for whatever the reason, uh through age or absence, the landowner isn't able to change his water. Did that myself, plus I know other people do it just to, to irrigate the place just so that they can do it right. Plus have control over the water and work with the, the neighbors. And that's, that's one of the thing, you know, whiskey's for drinking and waters for fighting.
It's only ten thirty. It's a little more like whiskey.
But uh as far as the animal units, you know, it, it's in the country.
And it is stewardship land.
Mm-hmm. And a good neighbor has good fences and they, and I understand the state law is to fence animals out, not in. Of course, be a good neighbor, you always wanna have good fences to keep your animals in. But animals do get out every now and then. And I think the people that live in the country in the subdivision, they understand that. Uh, that's why they live in the country. But uh my, remaining questions are to kind of the same questions that the other commissioners have had.
Well, I, I understand neighbors' concerns, you know, that's, it's, it's, it's changing that, and we, we see this. You know, in my six plus years on the board, I've seen this numerous times where, you know. Uh, ag land next to subdivisions getting developed or something's changing and it's. It, it's always a, it's always a point of stress. Um. But that was, you know, most every, most every place that there's a, a house now was ag land once, so. Um, I do uh. I do encourage, uh, I do encourage a uh. An irrigation plan be worked out, so that way everybody makes sure that they're, uh, I mean, we have a plan here. But um I, I would suggest a, a, an agreement. You know, the Uncle Parker Valley Water Users requires that of any, any subdivision land that, that there's uh. Covenants regarding that.
Correct.
And so.
And then I think with this, and the new thing coming in, it'd be a, a kind of a trial and error situation. Okay, did this work? No, okay, well, we'll do that again. Look, what do we do with this? Okay, that works great for you. We'll keep going with that. I just, to, to know exactly how, how much water Hilltop takes, Merrilla Vista. You know, without, and then allowing the nineteen cheers that are supposed to go to my place.
So any other questions, commissioners, for staff or the applicant?
Mr. Chair, just on the animal units question. If it does come to meet the definition of a confined animal feeding operation in CAPO, then it would be subject to the land use code. Even, even though the comments will allow that, it's still subject to the land use regulations.
Would have, still have to be applied for.
Correct.
Yes, thank you, Carl, for the clarification.
And there's a quick claim deed involved also for the uh easement on that.
For the LJ, yes, the hammerhead.
So what's the will of the board?
Do we need to uh? Was that irrigation plan in the sub?
Covenants.
In, in the submitted and, and do we need to put any conditions? Any further conditions other than what is already the fourteen?
You, you know, the, the, the challenge here is, is, you know. Water law has to be adhered to, you know, and that's, that's ultimately, that's gonna be the challenge of the, of the users. Uh, once again, the county doesn't administer water law. And if, if Mr. Brown takes their water or they take Mr. Brown's water, that'll be a civil matter outside of the county. Um.
So no more conditions?
We, we've got the, we've got the plan.
There were fourteen conditions and according to staff, everything's been met. With the update Kate gets.
I, I.
With the additional language.
I would still like the additional language for the, for the emergency egress. Emergency access. Okay.
Okay. Well, I move that we approve PLN twenty-two dash zero zero seven C Brown. Cluster subdivision, accept a final plat for a six lot cluster subdivision in the A five zoning district located. To the west of Chantel Lane and north of LJ Road and accept a quick claim deed. For the emergency access and to note uh also about the easement language on the emergency access.
Second motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Brown, you're, uh, you've been a good neighbor from what we hear. Please, uh, continue to do some water. That'll be a big issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
That will conclude the planning department unless you guys have anything else. Nothing else? Chair would also like to recognize that uh May first is Commissioner Mike Lane's birthday, Big Seven O. Congratulations, Mike.
Thank you. Thank you.
And we had one cleanup item from earlier.
Yes, going back to twenty twenty-three RFP fifteen, you all awarded the Mirbitco for the CRS dash two R. For the actual emulsions products that is SS one AEP PG five A dash two eight. PG five A dash two eight with point three percent anti-strip delivered to Delta County. And PG five A dash two eight with point five percent anti-strip. Then uh, Works is recommending that that be awarded to SunCore. So those amounts are eleven thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars. For the SS one. Six hundred and thirteen thousand, two hundred for the PG five A dash two eight. Six hundred and thirty thousand for the PG five A dash two eight with point three percent. And six hundred and thirty-eight thousand, four hundred dollars for the PG five A dash two eight with point five.
Well, I'll move that uh we award twenty twenty-three RFP dash fifteen for the four items. So eloquently stated by our county administrator for the dollar amount stated.
My second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so done. So any of the other business for the board today?
I've done.
Stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.